I thought the crowd was exceptional. There was a lot of people there even though it was a little cold. The ceremony was good. We can work on the microphone next year, but other than that, it was, it turned out to be good. And even Nancy Marney figured out a way to have a throw switch that you throw to power the lights that's not electrically connected to anything. So I thought that was a feat of engineering in itself, right there.
Very same kind of thing.
Yeah. So that was good last night. I think we've got a fairly brief but important agenda tonight. So we're going to try to work through this expeditiously. I'm glad to have Ms. Bradlin back with us. So hopefully we'll get some financing stuff figured out and stay on track. So with that said, any council comments?
Skip a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
We'll do that right now. All right. Let's do a moment of silence for a few minutes and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
All right. Now, any other comments from the council? All right. Moving the regular agenda item. We'd like to adjust this agenda at all.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
I'll make a motion that item number one be tabled till the next meeting. Give us a little bit more time for us to go after grants. I feel like we need to let the community know a little bit more and be more knowledgeable of why we're going after this. And at this point in time, we cannot do that. So I make a motion that we table this till we can.
I'll second that. I agree.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to table item number one. Please call the roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower. Yes. All right, item two. Consider first reading of an ordinance to repeal and reenact two dash three of chapter two of the city code. Staff report.
Counsel, we have discussed this at the previous council meeting in regards to our procurement policy here within the city. And in order to, not that we were out of compliance with the Virginia Procurement Act, but just in order to update where we're at with the procurement policy since it has changed, we have, would be updating our current section two hyphen three of the code to several different limits that were not previously in that section. The, we're mainly upping those thresholds for what certain requirements must be met when it comes to purchasing within the city. I have also forwarded this to our financial auditor. They have no issue with this new policy. They believe it's a good policy. And then I guess one of the main changes in regards to this policy is paragraph number nine, which was not in the previous policy states that the use of separate purchase orders to avoid the above mentioned thresholds are prohibited. The above mentioned thresholds will relate to the aggregate purchase price for a specific purchase. So that would prevent potential abuse within the city where someone would know that it may go over the threshold of a certain dollar amount, but do it in multiple type purchases in order to not have to maybe necessarily get bids or anything like that.
Okay. I don't see anyone specifically signed up for public comment on this item. So do I have a motion by council on this item?
Move for first reading of the ordinance to repeal and reenact section two dash three of chapter two of the city code.
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion and a second? Clerk call the roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower. Yes. We've got, we've got to read the word.
Ordinance to repeal and reenact chapter two administration, section two hyphen three purchases generally, bid ordained by the city council for the city of Bristol, Virginia, that chapter two administration, section two hyphen three, purchase generally is hereby repealed and reenacted to read as follows. Section two hyphen three, purchases generally, the following regulations pursuant to the Virginia Public Procurement Act are adopted and shall hereafter be referred to as a small purchase procedure. Purchases made by the city of Bristol, Virginia shall be in accordance with the Virginia Public Procurement Act. Paragraph two, purchases that do not exceed $5,000 are exempt from the competitive practices and procedures specified in this section. However, it is requested that city departments obtain the best pricing possible. Paragraph three, the procurement of goods or services that are expected to cost between $5,000 and one penny and $25,000 shall require a minimum of three written quotations. The procurement of goods or services that are expected to cost between $25,000 and a penny and $100,000 shall require a minimum of four written quotations. The procurement of goods or services that cost over $100,000 shall require the solicitation of competitive sealed bids or proposals. Professional services that are expected to exceed $60,000 shall require the solicitation of competitive sealed proposals. The city manager, in the case of an emergency that does not allow sufficient time to engage normal procurement procedures, may authorize a contract for the purchase of goods or services on an emergency basis if it is determined to be in the city's best interest to do so. In paragraph eight, in all cases, the names of each person or business submitting quotations, the date and the amount of each quotation shall be recorded and maintained as a public record. In instances where the minimum number of quotations required are not obtained or are not available, the reasons why shall be recorded and maintained as a public record. Specifications or requests for proposals that are prepared for any solicitation for goods or services shall also be maintained as a public record. Paragraph nine, the use of separate purchase orders to avoid the above mentioned thresholds are prohibited. The above mentioned thresholds will relate to the aggregate purchase price for a specific purchase.
Thank you. All right, on to agenda item number three. Consider changes to the general fund balance policy. Staff report.
Counsel, in July 14th of 2015, city council at that time implemented a general fund balance policy. And that policy had certain goals that were implemented in order for the city to become more fiscally responsible. And that pertained to the unassigned fund balance. The unassigned fund balance should be based on a percentage of the city's annual budgeted operating revenue. In order to establish an appropriate fund balance, the policy should be amended to set a goal that the city would have at least 18% of the annual budgeted operating revenue in the unassigned fund balance. And council also further desires to set aside a percentage of the annual budgeted operating revenue for emergency expenses and capital improvements. As I stated previously, this general fund balance policy was initially implemented on July 14th of 2015. In this new fund policy, what we would do, our previous policy stated that we would be, 12% of our annual budgeted operating revenue would go into the unassigned fund balance. However, in order to meet the requirements that, or the goal that city council wants, we need to up that to 18% of our annual budgeted operating revenue. Based on our current operating revenue budget, that would approximately put the city at $10.2 million in our unassigned fund balance. And also on page two, we would set aside one half of 1% of the revenues for emergency purposes and also the same amount for capital improvement plans. That's not a requirement. It means once we've reached that 18% of our operating revenue budget, that if we have extra funds available, then we would start putting funds into those, for those additional requirements as well.
Okay. Any, it looks like no one signed up for this item for public comment. It's the pleasure of council.
I make a motion that we implement this and up the general fund balance. Once we get there, you know, we'll be able to maintain it hopefully. We know we're going through the refinancing, so that's going to play a factor on it. It may take us longer to get to this 18%, but we need to set our goals and move forward and get there to keep us from out of the tans and the short-term borrowing. And I make a motion that we accept and adopt this.
I'll second that, but I do have some questions or some comments about some things that are during the discussion.
So we have a motion and a second. So we go to the discussion. All right. So we have a motion and a second. So council discussion?
So, you know, the 18%, where are we, where would we be at now percentage-wise?
We're roughly at, a little over, probably about 11% at the moment.
Okay. And the 18 would clearly keep us from having to use the tans.
Well, I was going to mention this later tonight, but it appears that we will not hit the tan this year, which will be the first time in a number of years the city has not hit the tan. So that's a good step in the right direction. That was for a number of different factors. We're not going to have to hit it this year. And one, I want to commend city employees for abiding by a, basically a necessary only purchases requirement that was put in place back in August in order to help us meet that tan, or not hit the tan. We think that at 18%, based on our operating annual budget, we should not hit, should not have to hit the tan. Now, this is only a policy. If we get to a situation where revenues are increasing and maybe expenses are increasing as well, we may have to readjust that 18% to be more in line with whatever our operating budget is. But as it stands right now for the foreseeable future, we feel like 18% is a good number.
Okay. That's good. I mean, I think that was one of the goals. And as you mentioned when you made the motion, you know, we need to quit, we're making good progress. We need to get to where we are. I guess my other question, and I don't disagree with the goal, is after you get there and it says could be used, and so since it says could, I don't have a huge issue with it. But, you know, setting up a reserve, a true, what you might call a rainy day fund, that's another good idea. I mean, we keep seeing things that pop up that, you know, that would be nice to have. My concern then is after that, the capital fund, I don't know that we have to wait on that. I think we could just start funding capital projects as they come, that you don't necessarily have to put it aside. And, because there's a big, long laundry list of capital projects that keep getting deferred from year to year. So if we had the funding, we could just apply it in that year and not necessarily set up a fund, although we could if you wanted. But I don't, to me, that would just defer it even longer. If the money's there, I'd say go ahead and fund it. But again, it says you could do these, so it's just a policy and a recommendation. You're not bound, necessarily bound by it.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a step in the right direction. It's not binding this city to make this mandated that we get it there. I mean, we just need a goal. And, you know, if something happens, then it's just going to take us a little bit longer to get there. But I think it's a good thing.
The philosophy is excellent. I have an issue with the wording in that particular section.
I was getting ready to bring that up.
As, I don't want this to even be mentioned as a reserve. It's not a reserve for emergencies and unexpected expenses. That's, that's not what we created this capital fund for. It was to cover daily operating expenses of the city. You go applying it to emergencies, then you, you're going to have to hit the tan anyway. If it's a big enough emergency, you're still going to have to hit the tan. At current levels now, obviously, with the highway widening project going to be started, you'll probably start having a cash crunch because VDOT usually has us pay upfront and then they repay us. Well, it's a 60-day drag. So hopefully we can get through the year, but I doubt it. Well, that's not a disaster. We get the money back.
The timing on that may play in our favor because all the property taxes are due right now, due December the 5th. So that's a huge influx of cash.
No, we're in good shape until the project gets underway, widening the highway, which will probably be in the next year instead of this one.
Well, as of today, our cash balance is $4 million, which has increased, I think, maybe in the last meeting, someone asked what the cash balance was, and it was $2 million at that time. So over the course of roughly two weeks, we've increased our cash balance by $2 million.
Yeah, it fluctuates. And then you hit the tax income and that gets you back.
Right. So the tax income's coming in right now. And that's the majority of the reason for that increase in cash.
Well, that was the only problem I had with it was the wording that it threw in, which I thought was unnecessary because you described it again later on for your other funds, like the rainy day fund, that sort of thing. I just objected to having the wording that call it a reserve when it isn't.
Well, the only, the only language that was changed, other than the, from 12% to 18%, was in paragraph E two and E three. That was the only additional language that was changed. There was no other language changed except from, from the 2015 version. So we just added some language and changed that 18%.
Yeah, I objected to it then, too. A lot of weight I have.
And I know, Mr. Hubbard, that you had mentioned that there were a couple of words you would like potentially changed. One in the first sentence, instead of require, put sets as a goal under the introduction. I have no objection to that. And then also under the purpose, change it to set a suggested minimum level for certain reserve balances. And I'll leave it up to councils how they would like for me to change that wording. But your suggestions are...
The require part means that you have to do it. So set it as a goal, that puts us back where we are. The rest of that thing is, it all talks about best efforts.
Okay, we're good. With me, anyway. Do you need a consensus on how the council feels on the wording? Just those two words?
Just, those are the two. And I think needing to add an S under the policy under paragraph one on the balances and strike the word reserves.
All right.
Other than that, I think that takes care of the language, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
So you'd have to amend your motion.
Well, I agree with Archie. I think he's right on this. I mean, we don't need to make any mandates here. So, I mean, if we can do it, great. But if we can't, we've got to remember 30 months from now, we're looking at some serious financial issues. And so we can't lock our money up and not be able to get to it.
I know you all have had a motion and a second, but if you would want me to bring back a clean version on December 12th, in order to pass it, I'll leave it up to you all.
I'd prefer it be clean.
Well, if there's a reason why we can't pass it today, contingent upon these conditions...
There's no, no reason you can't. I just didn't know you'd rather have a clean version.
Handle two words and an S.
I hope we can.
I would rather pass it tonight and be done with it.
That's fine.
Is it okay with everybody else with the revisions of the wording?
Yeah, the word changes are minor.
Yeah, that's minor.
And 10 of the 12 to 18% is clear. That's, that's needed. I think we've proved that getting off the tans, it's iffy at 12%. I mean, we're squeaking by, but 18% gives us margin. But the other, the other items in here, the million dollars and the four for the capital is needed. As a extra cash reserve, it's restricted. So I think you're, I mean, I can go either way, but I think the language changes are minor.
Lot of it, too. But words, words are everything.
So what I'm hearing tonight already is we're going to go into the reserves, I mean, if need be. I mean, I've heard that from vice mayor. So, you know, it is what it is. We're setting this aside every year as a reserve to keep us from using tans. But what I heard tonight was, we're going to use it. We've got these things coming up, so we're going to use it. So it is what it is.
Well, we can't tie the city's hands. We need to set goals and we need to strive to work through and achieve them. But at the same time, we got to be real about it. If we can do it, great. But in 30 months, if we can't, we, we got to have the flexibility to pay our bills.
And then we're borrowing against the tans again at a high interest rates, what we're doing. So in other words, this is the purpose of this, that when Mr. Hartley and Mr. Hubbard were on council and the council voted for this, was to keep it as a reserve. Period. That was, that was the purpose of it. And now what we're hearing is, we're going to use it for whatever. And we're going to be back potentially borrowing at a higher interest rate with the tans, the short-term notes and so forth.
I don't know that you need to do that. What, what, what will change in 30 months, from my understanding, when we approved debt restructuring, is the money that we're now transferred to unassigned fund balance would be transferred to debt. So we, basically, when we get to a certain point, it's built up about as much as it's going to get built up.
Yeah, once we get there.
But, but I don't, I don't, at least my intention is not to dip into it. Because the whole point is to have it, to get off the tans. And then if you can get beyond that 18%, to, I think that's what the policy says, set up a rainy day fund. And then capital, like I say, I don't know that you necessarily need to set the capital aside. But I think definitely a rainy day fund's a good thing.
Well, I just, that's not what I heard. But I guess that's where you have five ears and five people that hear different things. But I heard if 30 months comes and we have to use it, we're going to use it. And then we're back to square one. So we're basically taxing people more now to essentially use that money, which is my fear about raising taxes, is that we potentially be using this money down the road.
It's coming in every year, so it's going to accumulate.
I'm not, I'm not reading like that.
Yeah. What I meant, what I meant was...
Well, let's, let's, let's read, let's go ahead and read what it says here. Make sure we're all clear. You know, the, the policy has several funds defined in here, right? The unassigned fund balance, 12% to 18%. When you read those paragraphs, it's, it's the same intent it's always been, which is to not have to go and get short-term notes to pay the bills. And that's all we're changing, is the 12% to 18%. So that's clear.
But I also heard, Mr. Mumpower, Mr. Mayor, that we, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the reason we did this and raised real estate taxes two or three, four years ago was to accumulate this account. So we wouldn't have to be fiscally irresponsible and borrow short-term notes.
That's the way it's worked.
That's what I understood. And I wasn't on council when that happened, but you explained that to me. Mr. Hartley's explained that to me.
That's true.
Now, what I heard in discussions already is, and we can, there's always a playback. And we can all, everybody that's here tonight, everybody out there watching this can play it back. And we basically said that we're going to, if we have to use this money, this, this, and this in 30 months. So essentially, we've, we're back again in 30 months potentially to what we set out to prohibit. And that's what I heard. Okay? And we can have, it's open to interpretation, perhaps. My interpretation is that we're going to use this. And that is, we're back again to borrowing where we were. And so that's why I, that's, that's what I heard. And we, you know, that's why we all have ears and we have eyes and we can sit back and watch this back. It's always good entertainment. And if I didn't hear that from Mr. Vice Mayor, right, then I'm, you know, I'll eat my words. But that's not what I heard.
Okay. Well, let me rephrase it. What I was talking about in 30 months with the debt that's coming, right now, we're at 12%. That's what the old council set up. But actually, we're at 11. Mr. Eads said we're at 11% right now. If we change this from 12% to 18%, let's just assume we don't get to 18% with the debt that we're going to have, that we're committed to. Let's say we get to 14. Our goal is to get to the 18%, but we may not get to the 18% because of the debt. But if we can get there, great. I'm not talking about using this money towards the debt. It's percentages. We have to maintain a certain balance to do business. We're going to up the percentages from 12% to 18%. But if we cannot get there because of the financial commitments of this city, at least we're trying. We're setting the bar higher. We're trying to improve the financial status of the city. I'm not talking about using this money in the future towards debt.
Well, if that's, if that's the issue, then, you know, I'm not saying, I don't think it's possible to say we're going to get to 18%. That would be a lofty goal.
Well, we're 2 million, we're 2 million short.
That would be a lofty goal for council. But my only concern is, and I'd love to hear everyone on council say, that we're not going to raid that money. When that's the goal and the purpose, that we bought, that we've raised real estate taxes six cents over time.
10.
10? 10 cents? 10 cents over time. Now, my understanding was that that was to make sure we don't have to borrow short-term notes. I mean, I weren't rehashing what I said. But, you know, now that I've heard Mr. Wingard assure me that we're, whether he's on this council or not on this council, we're not going to raid that money absent an emergency circumstance. But if, if what I, if I misunderstood him, that we're trying to get to 18%, fine. We're never going to get to 18% probably, given circumstances. But it's a lofty goal, and I think it's commendable. But, you know, I just want to make sure that I didn't misunderstood, Mr. Vice Mayor, you're saying you wouldn't take this money that we've raised taxes up for the purpose of doing. Is that what you're saying?
I'm not going to say that because we don't know exactly what we're looking at. We're going to go through another budget cycle after the first of the year.
All right. Okay.
Nobody can sit here and guarantee any of this money's not going to be used for certain things.
I don't anticipate we're going to have to use it.
We just can't tie our hands in the process.
All right. So you, I did hear you write the first time, I think.
But we're talking about percentages here, going from 12% to 18%.
It's just a goal, just as you said.
It's a goal.
Well, and I think it's a lofty goal. But my point is, if that money's for, I mean, I'm not going to rehash it. Bottom line is, call it up. It's going to be taken. I figured it would be taken.
Well, to me, I think it's pretty clear. When you read the policy, it says that council is to only establish this 18% in the unassigned fund balance to make sure we do not have to tap into the tans. That's the absolute intent of this. So we're not voting for using it for any other purposes because we can't afford to go borrowing money to pay our operating expenses. So unless we change the language, it's very clear when you read it, that's the intent of this. So if any council after us, or this council, votes differently, then you're violating what we're saying in this policy.
No, no. The only thing you have to do, Mr. Mayor, is have another council that decides they want to spend more money in this, this, and this. And they change the language.
Yeah.
And then they, that's right. They can vote the language change, then they can turn in and raid the fund that we've raised taxes up for. That's exactly what will happen, guaranteed right now. It's what's going to happen. So, but that's fine.
That's possible, but we can't make decisions based on what some future council might do. We have to do the best we can do with what we have to work with now.
Absolutely.
If some other council wants to trash it, that'd be on them, not us. And there is nothing that you can pass as a council that forbids future councils from doing anything.
So you suggesting we add stricter language in there to prevent...
After what I've heard from council tonight, my point is, is, you know, we, ultimate issue to me, Mr. Mayor, is this. You just heard from Mr. Hubbard, who was involved with Mr. Hartley in doing this tax increase. I mean, you know, we didn't pay to do the tax increase to pay down debt. We didn't do the tax increase for anything else. We did the tax increase, it's what was sold to the citizens of Bristol. We did the tax, it's what y'all sold.
They only finished.
And then I just heard tonight, we can't prohibit, which I knew we couldn't prohibit, a future council from wanting to do in, get in here and just squeeze it out. Maybe more pay raises, more fancy vehicles, more this, this, and this. So my whole point is, the people have been squeezed on a lot. That's how I see it. If we're saying we can't control future councils, we can't, and that's right, we can't. I agree with you. But it's telling the people, this is what we're going to do when you bought it and they voted for it. And now we're saying we can't do it. I mean, Mr. Hartley's alluded to the fact there could be, you know, a major catastrophe that we need to use money. I could buy that. There might be a fire engine we need to purchase or something catastrophic. But the bottom line, to use this for any other purpose other than a capital improvement or a capital need is a lie to the people. That's a lie to the people.
That's, that's the way we've been following that policy, and that's the way we want to continue to follow it. Once we're off the council, we can't make future councils follow anything.
Well, then we shouldn't have, we shouldn't have done this.
What are you talking about? Shouldn't have done it.
Well, if you're going to do that, then, then, I'm, nothing, Mr. Hubbard, just leave it at that. Okay? Just vote it up and down.
To, to your point, though, that, that... To, to your point, though, that, that, under that E, that first item, that's that rainy day, that's the real, that's a reserve, I think, in the way most of us think, that if something like a fire engine, or, well, this year, like the animal shelter come up, I mean, you have a, something you unforeseen that you can dip into. I don't see any circumstance where you, you, you would wanna dip into this, because it, it would be kinda foolish, it would put you back on that same path of, of using the TANs. Now, at some point, you may have to, the money you're setting aside may end up...
Some other be used.
For the debt, I mean, that, that may be where it ends up having to, to be at some point down the road.
That's different. That's different. That's not what the people were told when they raised the taxes, that's, that's different.
But maybe we can get where we're at with this, so...
Well, we know we're pushing it close, 'cause we've brought down to two million dollars, and when you're dealing with the operation of a city...
As fluctuation, as it comes.
It fluctuates, and we dropped down to two million, so it's obvious, we probably need to, to up that, so that we don't have to break into these TANs.
If we go back to that, it's Pay Me Tuesday for a hamburger today, or whatever, the old wimpy kinda thing, okay? Seriously, the Popeye thing, is it Popeye?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, and that is no way to run your personal finances, it's no run, way to run the finances of people that you're responsible for, but...
That's why we did it.
Yeah, well, this is hope that...
So far, it's been successful.
Let's hope that people going forward are fiscally responsible, and they try to do the right thing for the people in the city, instead of quick fixes, short-term fixes every six months and so forth and so on, borrow money to keep us going till we get a taxes, which if you live like that, you're really, that's just, it's, I, I don't even know how, I don't even know how that even happened, but it did apparently.
Well, this is the beginning of the answers, to not do that. But we came close to having to borrow, I mean, we got within two million dollars. So, it's obvious we need to increase it a little bit.
Yeah.
That's a cushion.
Yeah, it's a cushion.
But it's, it's, it's working. I mean, we borrowed very little the year before, I mean, it's every year we've, we kept doing it, we hadn't spent the money, and that's what we promised, we weren't gonna spend it, till we got eight, ten million bucks, and that's when the...
That promise has held for two years, that promise has held for two, a little bit over two years, and it's, I'm optimistic that it will hold for a little bit longer, but, you know...
Long as we're on council, it should hold.
Well, that's six more months.
Well, I mean, the new council's fully aware of what the goals are, and they seem to be in agreement. That's all we can hope for.
All right.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. We've heard all the discussion, do we have any changes to the motion at all?
Just, just the wording.
So, you wanna change your motion to have it correct the wording as described?
Well, I'll make a motion that we adopt this new policy on the eighteen percent from twelve to eighteen, with the concerns of Mr. Hubbard on a couple of the words.
I think it needs to be a little more specific. Ms. Reed, do you understand what he's saying?
I understand, I understand what the motion means, and I've got it in writing as to what I need to change.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Fleener.
Have a second.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
All right, consent agenda, I think we're gonna go down through these one at a time. There's one here we wanna recognize, four point three, so we'll go ahead and quickly go through these. So, consent agenda four point one, the consider appropriations, they're listed there, eight hundred forty-two thousand six forty-eight to the FY eighteen budget, and the items are listed specifically there in the consent agenda. So, do we have a motion to...
Moved to approve, four point one.
Okay, got a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a second. Any council comments? Okay, call the roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
All right, four point two, consider purchase requisition.
That was part of the consent agenda.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, yep. All right, consider board appointment, four point three.
That's all consent.
No, we wanna do that separate.
Mr. Wingard wants it being done separate.
Okay, I didn't know it was pulled out, sorry. Actually, we probably need to go back and do four point two, the motion was for four point...
I tried, that was my mistake, I should've said four one and four two.
So, if...
Let's go ahead and do fourteen.
Yeah. Move to, okay, consider purchase requisitions, four point two.
I'll second.
Council discussion, questions? All right, call the roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
All right, item four three, consider board appointment, Bristol Redevelopment Housing Authority, Frances Finan, hope I pronounced that properly.
Finan, yes.
So, we need a council motion and a second, and any, any comments about Ms. Finan?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we accept her appointment, and just wanted to thank her for willing to commit her services to the city, and just let her know that we appreciate it.
I believe that's, it's a man, Ed.
Oh, is it a man?
Frank, or is it Frank, or...
So, this is Francis?
It's Francis.
Francis, oh, okay, I was thinking of Frank.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's who I thought it was. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I apologize for that, but just wanted to acknowledge our appreciation and thank them for their service.
Yeah.
Do you have a second for that, somebody?
I'll second.
All right. Got a motion and a second? Call the roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
All right, council discussion items, item B, request for proposal for Davenport Company.
Yes, council, this, over the course of the past several months, you all are well aware, we've been in the process of refinancing our debt. We have completed RFP process, and that RFP process came back, and Robert W. Baird and Company was the company that gave us the best interest rates and the least amount of expenses for the refinancing of this debt. I do have Roland Kooch on the line, on telephone, if you have any specific questions for him, but it seems pretty straightforward in the packet that was sent out to you all as to what our debt service payments are projected to be as of a closing on, on or about February one of two thousand eighteen. I think the biggest thing, difference that we see is the amount that will be due for the, from the city in two thousand twenty. Our projected needs were gonna be about one point one million dollars, however, based upon the new interest rates and the expenses, our projected needs over our debts, current debt service payments, only gonna be eleven thousand six hundred and thirty dollars for two thousand twenty. So, that actually gives us kind of another year buffer in order to ramp up, to start making that extra debt service payment. That's, that's the gist of what would've been said tonight to Davenport, and I wanted to save them a ten-hour round trip, so...
So, saying I'm here, no issues with a February one closing at this point?
As of today, we're shooting for a February one closing, and we'll come back in January with the ordinance for the city to authorize the refinancing of this.
How firm are these interest rates that they've been quoted?
The interest rates are always, you know, it's bonds, I mean, they're always gonna move up and down, I mean, nothing's locked in at this point, but we're hoping to lock those in within the next probably four to six weeks.
So, it could go up in December.
This could go up.
It could go up, I mean, it could go up, it could go down, I mean...
Knowing our luck, it ain't going down.
I think Roland's speaking to us from somewhere. Go ahead, Roland.
Yeah, I just wanted to elaborate on Archie's comments, until, and again, as, as we, Archie's earlier, the prior bond transactions in the city's past, and, because I think we've also talked to the city council mayor, Mumpower, Vice Mayor, and all council members, until these bonds are sold in the marketplace by R, by R. W. Baird, which we envision, we're gonna close on February one, we envision after the first council meeting in January, we'll give any formal approvals and have the ordinance to do the transaction, then we will be able to lock in those rates through the marketplace at that time. So, the market, this will be subject to change until about the, what I'll call mid-genere bond sale date. I supposed to read that one time. So, what you see here is quoted as of the proposal rates, when they submitted their proposals. The good news is, this, these rates have not really changed much in the past, what I'll call past thirty to forty-five days. The market on the taxable side is fairly constant and fairly well.
Guess the question I had is, we, the current low bidder, if they can raise rates later on, they may be the high bidder. I mean, what happens when there's a semi...
None of that, Archie, all of these are based on the same concept, which is the treasury market.
Okay.
The low bidder has proposed what I'll call the lowest spread overall over the treasury market. Treasury markets are controlled, in fact, by the market, they're, they're not controlled by anybody, you know, anyone, one, anything to that guy. The treasuries are established based on market rating and trading. What you see here is R. W. Baird has proposed, with equally the lowest spread to that treasury market. Now, all of these proposals, these are the same treasury market.
Roland, Doug Fleener, a question for you. The Fed will be meeting in December, and there's a lot of speculation that they're gonna raise it a quarter interest, quarter point interest rate. Will that potentially affect, and, and I'm, I'm understanding that the bond market, including junk bonds, are being bought up and so forth, kept up and so forth, rather than have an inverted curve. My question for you, sir, is if it does raise a quarter point, we're not, we don't have any memorandum of understanding, we're not locked in, so potentially, you would agree that we could be going up a half a basis point potentially, before we close this?
Well, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to agree to that, Doug, on that, that supposition by, by this. Couple of things we know that we all see in the marketplace. One, typically, that quarter point is not subscribed to the market.
Okay.
Generally, when markets are subscribed, is when you see rather large movements. I think the market is probably assuming that that is built in, or kind of baked in...
Okay.
To a certain degree, and it depends on ultimately, you know, what part of the yield curve. As I said, Mr. Fleener, there's a variety of places that could be affected. There's also a lot of other factors that affect the long part of the yield curve versus the short part.
Roland, would you consider us to be a junk bond, would this be a junk bond issue, or would this be...
No.
No, okay. How, what, how would you categorize it?
You are, you are in the, you're in the investment grade category. One rating is what I'll call middle, it's the, it's the lowest investment grade category with mid-tier. So, you're not, you're not by far, you're not any, you're not close to the junk bond status there. The other rating is in fact in the A-race category, which is a solid, solid category. So, it's, it's not a junk bond.
Okay. Thank you, Roland.
Other questions? All right, thank you for the work, looks like we're moving forward.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roland.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Roland.
So, we will, we will let R. W. Baird know that there'll be the, the other part of the same thing, and I, and I think just as a, as a further style, one thing that Randy had, had didn't come out was, FTM was the next bet proposal, we could, we could offer them to have a small participation in that as well, council, those are the items.
We can discuss that.
Okay, well, we'll discuss that, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Roland.
Thank you. All right, next item, under the council discussion matters to be presented by the members of the public, one person signed up, Nancy.
Okay.
All right, I guess that's all the comments, next item, city manager's comments.
Counsel, only thing I would like to say tonight is that the city employees really appreciated the Thanksgiving dinner that we had for them Thursday before Thanksgiving, there's a lot of work went into that by Ms. Debbie Denny here to pull that together, and everyone truly appreciated it, she did a great job, and I appreciate what she did. As everyone knows, the holiday season's coming up, and just encourage everybody to have a happy and safe holidays here over the next several weeks, and spend time with family when they have that opportunity.
Amen.
I will say the food was good, too. So, the departments, I think, went out and, you know, made stuff and brought it to the Thanksgiving luncheon, and it was all good.
It was good.
It was a very good meal, actually, very good.
I would, let me go ahead and do, I will say this, on December the second, Lee Highway, okay, December second, we were planning on a November thirtieth closing date for Lee Highway to be detoured through the falls, but we've, it's gonna be moved to December second for that closing to happen, so on December second, there, beginning at the Sheetz red light, traffic will be diverted through the falls, up all the way around, past Aldis, and then diverted back out on the Lee Highway, and that's for that widening project and raising that road bed.
Can you comment about the fire study?
Oh, yes, the fire study, there will be a town hall meeting on December the fourth for the public to come, we will have the Virginia State Fire Board here, they want to hear public comments in regards to the fire services and EMS services that are provided in the city, and, so that'll be on December the fourth at seven PM for the public to attend, and of course, all council is welcome to attend to that as well. They will be here for three days, and then we should get a report back from them mid-February, early March, as to what they believe our fire services and EMS services need in order to operate efficiently and effectively.
So, what, December four meeting is just gonna lay out what they're gonna do?
Well, it's a town hall meeting, I think it's more for public comment and for questions that council may have, or the fire board, and concerns that council may have in regards to our fire department and EMS services, so that's an opportunity for you all to voice your concerns with the fire study board, so that they can come up with possible solutions for any concerns that you all may have.
Okay, anything else? All right, next item is executive session, executive session pursuant to two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight dot A one, Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended, discussion, consideration, or interviews, a prospective candidate for employment assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body personnel.
And council, I'd also ask that when you make that motion, that you allow our human resource director, Trish Henderson, in on that, for that executive session.
All right, need a council motion with Ms. Henderson in the, in the conference room.
I make a motion we enter into executive session.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second?
Fleener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed.
Hartley.
Hartley.
Fleener.
Y'all get to vote twice?
No.
Okay, yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
All right, and I think that was the last item. So, I hereby adjourn the November twenty-eighth city council session.